We are now going to call the official second budget hearing of 2023-24 to order. Mr. Truesdale, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Daniels. Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Lawson.
Here.
Mr. Majors. Ms. Rawls.
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Present.
Ms. Bowers.
Present.
I'll just note that Councilman Majors is absent today. It's an excused absence. He will catch up on the questions and send any questions that he has to the police department. So the first order of business is going to be the Bureau of Police. So if you don't mind introducing yourself, and then I know you guys have a wonderful presentation, so you can start whenever you're ready.
Right now, we'll call it a presentation. Thank you for having us. On behalf of Commissioner Carter, I'd like to present the Bureau of Police budget for 2024. With us in attendance here for the Bureau of Police is some of my distinguished colleagues who have somehow sauntered off to the far reaches of the outer solar system there. I'd like to introduce Captain Russell Wyder. He's the captain of the Community Services Division. Captain Kenny Young, who's commander of our Technical Services Division. Captain Atta Akakbo Martin, he's commander of our Uniform Patrol Division. And last but not least, Captain Terry Wieland, he's the commander of our Criminal Investigation Division. They're joining us here along with some a bevy of community service aides. So we'll get started, that's okay. Before, you should have a brief PowerPoint presentation. There are several things I'd like to point out. I like comparing apples to apples. I didn't have the budget book until this morning, so we did just some double checking. We used the website budget book. And so I'll point out the differences in there. They're not too much major, but there were some changes to the PowerPoint presentation you do have. On the next slide there is just our organizational chart. As fate would have it, in general order, one organization governs how we are organized. We met today to work on the revision of that general order. And others, slight changes to this, they're not in effect yet, and this is what it is as of today. Next page. What I decided to do is, I'm going to go through, as we go through the slides, recently tell you about what new positions we have for the budget. There are two, a GVI grant project manager and a GVI part-time outreach coordinator, both of which earlier this year, Captain Wyder came over and with the GVI grant, explained what we're trying to do there, and you previously approved those things. They were added in there as a, I think I called it a temporary account. And I'll explain that later. But right now, the GVI grant project manager position is filled. It is a city management add for 2024, and that's reflected in our personnel numbers. The GVI part-time outreach coordinator, also approved by you earlier this year, it's part-time, $37,500, both salaries being paid for by the GVI grant. And that's a PCCD grant. The raises for the three types of employees within the Bureau of Police are FOP contractual 3.5% raise, our AFSCME employees a 3% contractual raise, and management got a 2% across-the-board raise. Next slide. For the Bureau of Police FOP personnel, currently we have 102 police officer positions or patrol officers. Nineteen of those are vacant. What we looked at for 2024 in order to assist with balancing the budget is, and the timing I think it was a bit off because we're in the middle of a recruitment cycle, we, our next Police Academy class starts in January of 2024. We anticipated hiring between four to five people. Those were my numbers, my projections. They fell short. It ended up, we just did interviews yesterday. I guess it's safe to say, we're going to make three conditional offers to employees for them to start in January. So six of those vacancies of the nineteen patrol officers are fully funded for 2024. To assist with balancing the budget, what we looked at is, our next academy doesn't start until July of 2024. So we made the remaining thirteen patrol officer salaries half-funded for the year. Going down to the different vacancies for the Bureau of Police, we have one lieutenant, for the supervisor, we have one lieutenant, one sergeant. The lieutenant, that promotional list is empty. We have three civil service promotional eligibility lists, lieutenant, sergeant, and corporal. The lieutenant and sergeants will be completely exhausted by January. The patrol officer to corporal is still good till April of 2025. So what we ended up doing was, knowing without, what we could have probably done, because I don't know, I don't think we're going to do a promotional exam in 2024, is we decided just to make the lieutenant salary one quarter funded, just in case we do decide to keep our operational flexibility. Two detectives, one of them was a detective one day and a corporal the next day. So he is already promoted. We have, one of those is fully funded. One is, we're going to plan on filling it later in the year with some additions, hopefully to our ranks through hires. We have one forensic investigator position, that's funded for a half salary. Don't anticipate, if we do make that move, that's an internal discussion we're going to have in regard to manning and people who are trained and eligible to do that. We're going to start a career development with that type of position because it does take a long time to make a forensic investigator in the criminal investigation division. But putting a full-time person there may not be possible in 2024, but we want to have some flexibility there. And even if it determines that we do put somebody in there, and this is the disadvantage of not filling it, is that it is, it could be a grant-funded position for all of 2024. But I don't know if we're going to have an opportunity to take advantage of that. And then I just explained the nineteen patrol officers. Recruiting, I just stated, we had three conditional officers for the eight January 2024 Hack Police Academy. That ended our recruiting cycle that started on five August. It also included a list that started the previous March, I believe, March of 2023. We took the second part of that list, the entire list of this recruiting cycle that started in August, and concluded that yesterday. Well, it's not concluded, there's still a lot to do. We also, as, I think we are here last, I don't remember why we are here, but I handed out cards for recruiting. So if someone, a little sales pitch, if anybody's interested in being a Harrisburg police officer, please go to either our city website or the police app, and you can see what the qualifications are, and we'd love to talk to you, just come down and talk to us also. But that will actually, the written exam for that is five, six March of this coming year. And that is, our hopes there are, we will be putting people in the July 2024 Hack Police Academy class. And we talked about supervision. Next slide, please. The personnel additional costs. I wanted, so what I did was, when you look at these slides in particular, I put, the red on the screen and gray on your, but the arrow will point out what is changed in the plus, like what are we asking more money for, and we're going to explain why. There, and that was the temporary account, 415000 temporary, that's $216,500 in there. That is how we are paying for the grant-funded positions in the school crossing guards. So that part-time employee is being paid from the grant, is 37.5 is for the outreach coordinator, and 179,000 is for the school crossing guards. We pay them out of the budget, but I think it's the school district, once we invoice them, reimburses 60% rate of that. Okay? Any questions on that page? Next page. There are two lines on there, fairly self-explanatory. Because of contractual raises within ASME and the FOP, the Social Security and the police pension fund both increased. You can see the differences there in those amounts. And that's why that one changed. Any questions on that? Next page. Clothing allowance, 419028. I just, it did go up from 70,223 to 76,100, and that was, we have more people became eligible to receive the clothing allowance. When you first become a patrol officer, you get, all your gear is given to you, uniforms, equipment. You don't get a clothing allowance for the first three years, but is, after that, next year, you get a clothing allowance, so the numbers always go up and down a little bit. And then 421016, it's plus $23,625, going from 19,950 in 2023 to 43,575. What we did is, and I think it's one thing that city council should understand, is there is a K9 foundation, a nonprofit that was organized years ago, that pays for the majority of K9 purchases, maintenance, food, medical, a lot of things to do with the K9. We pay for the training, the vehicles, but the foundation pays for lost stuff. Just in case the foundation won't pay for something, we have to have the ability to do that. So last year, we started adding a few lines in there to show what that, the true cost might be if we had to do it. And this is what those additional things are. Do we anticipate that happening? I'm not 100% sure, but we want to start adding that stuff to show what the true cost is. And that sometimes is why in some of these lines, when there's a lack of utilization, that is why. We had to build some contingencies in there, and like, one of, a good example is, we had a police vehicle at one time that got contaminated with a controlled substance. We had to get that thing cleaned, we couldn't do it ourselves, we had to contract that out, and now we have a line built in our budget just in case. We've only used it one time. So it seems kind of ridiculous, but if the money's not there, we don't have a way to pay for it. So that's why we kind of do that. It's a contingency that hopefully we'll never use. Any questions on that lines?
I just have a question, excuse me, regarding the foundation. Is it a local foundation, or what?
It's local to this area.
Okay.
I don't know where it's actually physically located. Our Sergeant Ty Mike and Corporal Don Bender are K9 supervisors. They're the ones who interact with them on really a daily basis. They discuss, you know, the purchase of dogs, where they pay for the dog food, we go get, if they need veterinary care, they go take care of that. So they do a lot of stuff for the City of Harrisburg and for the Bureau of Police and for the K9 program. They're all, it's about the K9 themselves and supporting them. So where they're physically located, I'm not sure. Is it? Okay.
And do we know the name, or?
Yes. Did I write it down? No.
Okay.
Atta, can you help me?
Oh, that's what, okay. Harrisburg K9 Foundation, for anybody that didn't hear.
I didn't want to say it and it'd be wrong.
No, that's fine, thank you.
I briefed it some other time, but I didn't remember the name of it.
Thank you.
No other questions? Next page, please. 423080, plus 97,574. So that is, it's a police professional deductible. We don't, there are several things in here we don't set the rate for. It's set by the business administrator or sometimes the insurance carrier. So I'm not sure why that one went up so much. It's just, I don't have a good explanation, I just know that it's there. 429014, plus $22,001. There was an increase for our contractual personnel services. For our, we have three mental health coresponders. They're Dauphin County employees who hire, train, discipline, and whatever the employees, but they work with us every day, and we, the City of Harrisburg pays half their salary and benefits. So this year, the, that amount went up more than I thought it was going to, so we made that adjustment, that bill's paid, but we had to adjust it for 2024. The next one, 429090, plus 5,280. We'd already increased, that's basically is the miscellaneous contracted services. We'd already increased the Humane Society budget amount. We were still working with them on billing questions we had going back and forth, and that went very well. And we just recently got the contract, which will probably be before city council, before the end of the year. Next week, we'll be here back, and we'll be doing that. But they, they had a, this year, they had a 30% across-the-board increase in our fees to drop cats, dogs, and a separate category of pit bulls off. But there's some contractual improvements, but it was 30% more across the board.
Deputy, did, do they increase the allotment of animals they're willing to take with the increase?
Yes. That's one of the things, we met with them face-to-face late fall, I guess it is still late fall, early winter, but what we talked about, we had a 100 pit bull limit in our contract. We were, been bouncing right up against that number, and even in the last two weeks of last year, we were unable to bring pit bulls out to the Humane Society. So we talked to them about that, they agreed, and they raised that number to 150.
Okay, great, thank you.
So it should take care of us in the, for 2024.
Excuse me, sir. Just as we're, you said you were unable to take the pit bulls. What do we do with the pit bulls that they will not take?
We, Billy Sandstrom is our animal control officer, and Sabrina's our new animal control officer, he's training her. He has relationships with other agencies, nonprofits, that he can take them to. Luckily, in December, the number of pit bulls taken to the Humane Society usually drops off a little bit because of the cold weather. So we got kind of lucky. The ones that we did have to encounter, he had to make a much more diligent effort to find those owners, because we knew we couldn't take them out there, and hopefully we could find a place for a pit bull in one of the shelter, other alternative shelters that he does use from time to time. And just so you know, we did, we're exploring other possibilities other than utilizing Dauphin County also. It may be a little bit long overdue, but we may take some of those to other places also.
Okay, thank you.
The last one, I just wanted to point out, there was one difference in the budget book versus what was online. 429001, and on our sheet here, under Training and Tuition, it was listed as 263,970. That was corrected in the budget book. The correct amount there is 167,911, just so you know. Next page, please. Vehicular equipment repairs and maintenance, 425010, that's plus $17,000. We added K9 truck repairs, and ours is investigator bed cap, and maintenance on patrol bikes, is why that line went up. Under 425090 is plus $42,000. We worked with Crime Watch, we looked at other possibilities about how to incorporate crime mapping software, so a citizen can log on to our website, click on a map, and find out what crime is occurring in their local neighborhood. We used to have that capability, it went away when we changed record management systems. It's something we wanted to do again, so we met with several companies, we tried to do it internally with our own IT department, and our best solution was to go with Crime Watch to incorporate that data. So that, our record management system is CODI. The future of that is CODI Pathfinder. There is a one-time transition fee that we have to pay to have the honor of going to that new system. Are we going to do it in 2024? I don't think they're ready for us. I don't think it's really ready for implementation. They wanted us to pay so much money by January of this year, and we're like, we're just going to wait, because we truly expect to do it in 2025. In 2024, we might do it, so I budgeted that amount in case we have to pay that bill in 2024. I would imagine, if we were probably smart, it was, it's only going to go up as time goes on, so if we have the money in there for 2024, and we pay in 2024, and then implement the service in 2025, the fee is paid at a lower rate, and saves the city probably a few thousand dollars. Let's see. 430002, plus 24,0026. That was one of our, CODI is our record management system, is an increase in the subscription fee. There was one difference in the book, our different, our amount on this PowerPoint slide is 48,026. That's the same thing on the city website, but the budget book has it at 45,026. And in Tyler, where we put all that stuff into the, our munis, I mean, the correct amount is 45,026. So it's less, $3,000 less, truly. Now, the last one, 430009, plus $5,167. We added food for the K9s, amount of the foundation, and we increased National Night Out and the Community Service Division projects for 2024. So it went up just over $5,000. Any questions on that page?
I have a question regarding the technology transition, and then I guess both National Night Out and the Community Service Division projects. So for the one-time transition of, I guess, the CODI Pathfinder program and then the power time subscription, will both of these programs interface well with our munis system, or are they separate operating systems?
Yeah, the, CODI is a standalone system that we use to write police reports, complete criminal complaints. That's where all of our paperwork is generated from for dispatches. If we're dispatched to a call, we're dispatched by Dauphin County Emergency Management Agency, DEMA, out there in Spitera Township. The call is generated, is electronically sent to an officer's terminal in the car. It downloads twice, and it, what it does is, it builds every call that we're dispatched, it puts all those comments directly into our CODI system. It does it upon initial dispatch, and then when the final person clears the call, it downloads all that stuff, so that it generates the answer number, puts all the times in there. I think it's a time-saving device, I'm not 100% sure sometimes, but it, it's much more accurate depiction of how many calls we actually go on, and it captures all that data. That part of it, so that's what CODI does for us, it's our, it's our complete record management system. We use it for everything. Crash reports get downloaded into CODI. Criminal investigations are completed in CODI with supplemental reports. It does not interact with munis at all.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that there was nothing on the munis side that needed upgrading to, for the two to coexist. Now, with the National Night Out and the Community Service Division projects, maybe you'll get to it later, but what projects are on the horizon for the new year?
Hold on. You okay? We're just talking about these ones?
Yeah.
And then the increasing of National Night Out?
Okay. So let me start it with this. National, we'll start with National Night Out, because all of the prices are increasing for the vendors.
Okay.
The food, the gas, transportation, everything. And this past National Night Out, I know that we had to really, really do tough negotiations in order to get a certain amount of items for the monies that were paid. And in doing so, we just didn't have enough to cover everything that we expected. The numbers actually really, really grew, so it really went really, we ran out. I think that's the easiest way to say it. We ran out. Some of the projects that we're going to be doing into 2024, we're going to continue to do the projects that we have with the basketball tournament that we do, we're going to continue to do the projects that we have with the, I brought my wrong glasses, excuse me. Called the Hoop It Up. I wanted to make sure I got the name for it. Called the Hoop It Up Event, and that's something that we do every single year. Last year, we had to, had to be moved out of the city, we plan on bringing that back into the city, but it was still very much advertised, Harrisburg event, courtesy of, courtesy of the city and things like that. We're also planning on doing more of the barbecue events throughout the summer months. And what we're doing is, we are, and this is really the mayor's, mayor's idea, and I thought it was a good one, to make sure that we are coordinating our efforts with parks and wrecks at the time that they have the kids into the parks. And we want to be more strategic as far as the locations that we set, set up our events, thanks to my CSA barber, CSA barber back there. She had this wonderful idea of like, listen, we're having trouble with some of the people coming here, here's where the kids are, I know exactly where we are, and we loaded up the food and took it directly to them. So we want to do more of those type of engagements during the summertime. We also want to look into creating some sort of mentoring, not just with the food, and not just with National Night Out and that sort of stuff, but finding time to actually bring them together in a centralized location. We were actually looking to do it here in the police station, and see what we can do as far as opening up these communications with some of the youths in our community, and just having those open dialogue conversations, okay? Now, if we do that, and we do it successfully, I am going to need to put some food and some drinks up in the room so that they can, you know, munch on a few things, chat out a little bit as we're having those conversations as well. And that's basically where we're looking at putting those resources at.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions on that page? Thank you, sir. Next slide, 430001, educational. In the budget book, it was zeroed out, there's $5,000 in this line and on the website, but it is not needed, and it was removed out of the budget book. 43004, there's a $400 increase for the amount of road flares we need. And that concludes our budget presentation for 2024, based on, unless there's any questions.
I don't have any questions at the moment. Anyway, could we, we could go through the questions that were answered beforehand, so the ones that we sent to you guys and you emailed the answers back, could we go over that for the good of the public?
Yep, just read the question and read the answer?
Yes, unless you want to elaborate on the answer, but yes, read the question and the answer.
I can do that. Number seven. Whoops. Question was, we plan to add 10 new police officer positions according to mayor's presentation. How many vacant officer positions do you currently have? Have we reached our full complement at any point this year? So we went over earlier the amount of vacancies we do have. One lieutenant, one sergeant, two detectives, one forensic investigator, nineteen patrol officers. In 2023, seven of the patrol officer positions were not funded. In 2024, of the nineteen patrol officer vacancies, six were funded at full salaries for the January Hack Police Academy class, and thirteen were funded at half salaries for the July Hack Police Academy class. The Bureau of Police now reaches full complement in 2023. And that basically is recruiting and retention.
We have a question on this.
Just a quick question for clarification. When you say the salary was half-funded, what exactly does that mean?
So if you look at the, if you look at the personnel salaries, a, when you add up a new police officer trainee, what we did, we take, we took their salary for the people, for the thirteen people going to the July class, instead of their full salary, we sliced it by one-half and put that salary in there.
Is that because they're starting class in July? Is that the?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
I had one additional question. What, I had thought we did reach our full complement at one point in time, and if, but now you're saying we didn't, what is our full complement, though? When do we say, hey, we do have enough police officers? What is the?
155.
155, okay. One-fifty-five, okay. Thank you.
All right, um, I do have, uh, kind of like a follow-up question to this. So the nineteen patrol officers, um, I believe the mayor said that that's the, the ten new positions we're adding. Would that make it then twenty-nine patrol officer? Or is the nineteen, the nineteen that are vacant right now, if we add ten more, would that be twenty-nine vacant? We're looking to fill twenty-nine patrol officers?
No.
Or did the mayor misspeak?
I didn't hear what the mayor said. I saw that he said we plan to add ten new. Maybe she meant in twenty-twenty-four. We all had different opinions about what we can get to. I had expected if we had really good recruiting, uh, and kept the officers that we have on hand now by retaining them, that we would possibly reach our full complement by the end of this year. That didn't happen. Uh, one of the, one of our goals, and in twenty-twenty-three, we lost seven officers to other agencies. Not retirements, not residentations, not gonna go sell solar panels. Seven officers to other departments. It was higher than I thought it was gonna be. The previous years to that were twenty-twenty-two were five, twenty-twenty-one were eleven, twenty-twenty were eight, and twenty-nineteen were ten. That's a lot of officers to lose to other departments. I think it, I think the outlook, because we talked about this when the FOB contract was reopened in twenty-twenty-three, I think it had a positive impact on our ability to help retain people. Did people still leave after that? They did, but for other reasons. So part of it is retention of who we have. The other part is, how do we get more patrol officers to, anybody to apply? If we lined up, if we, if we had a, five people came in that, I wanna be a patrol officer, one or two may get through the physical fitness tests, the written exam, the background investigation, the polygraph, the oral interview board, the physical, the psychological, the Nelson-Denny reading test, a second PT test. They have to get through all those things just to get to the academy. Um, and we have civil service rules, so we, it's very explicit in there. If you don't meet the qualifications, you're disqualified. I mean, so, I mean, it, it's not impossible to become a police officer. We're not looking for, you don't have to have a perfect record, you don't have to be squeaky-clean, but there are certain things that will disqualify you via the civil service rules, and there are certain things will disqualify you by MOPAC, which is the governing agency which accepts police cadets into these colleges to get them their Act One Twenty certification, to get a certification to be a police officer in Pennsylvania. So they have to meet all that stuff. And if they don't, we can't hire them. So that's what I'm saying, is if you stand five young men or women in front of us, one, the real odds are one, one of you will make it. So that means for us to hire ten people, we have to do backgrounds between fifty and sixty. We, we do this on a part-time basis. We're not recruiters. You know what I mean? Like, I'm not a grant guy, I'm not a marketing guy, but I am. So at the end of the day is like, we have to take people out of their positions they're working right now and send them out to go to recruiting duties to run the PT test. We gotta do it on the Saturdays and Sundays because that's when we can give people who aren't doing their normal job. Luckily, the police managers come and do it for free. Uh, that doesn't cost the city anything. You know, but then we have to pay officers overtime to come out there and administer the test. They have to be trained to administer the test. It has to be done a certain way according to civil service rules. Um, HR has to be on hand to monitor the whole thing. So it's, recruiting is work, and it is worth it. And we've made great strides in recruiting, and I think we're not too bad at being part-time recruiters. Uh, we're not big enough like PSP New York City, you can put a team together, send them down to, uh, college campuses and neighborhood fairs. Yeah, we do go to some of that stuff, but we have to be very picky and we, we have to fit into our other schedules and still do our other jobs to get all this stuff done. So recruiting is very time-consuming. Does it cost a lot of money? Not really, but it takes a lot of time. And how do we go out there and find these? We can't, we can't go to the high school because they have to be twenty-one years old. You know what I mean? So, yeah, we can put that, plant that seed in their head, but they gotta wait until they're twenty-one. You know, so it, it, it's just a little more difficult. And let's face it, this is the, I think the city of Harrisburg, and I, I'm not gonna say we're a perfect agency, but we're very lucky to have the men and women we have working for the city right now. By and large, they're great people, great Americans, and I need more people like that. That's what I'm saying, is like, I'm not kidding. If you know somebody who wants to do the job, because you can't dabble in law enforcement, it's, you're all-in, or you might as well go find another job. So it's twenty-four hours a day, seems like seven days a week. It's, it's what you do. You're missing vacations and family time because you gotta go to court. You're working shifts, you're here every other holiday. When people are at home, they're still out there working. You know, when we're watching the Super Bowl, there's a bunch of guys and gals out there in a patrol car responding to calls for service and trying to keep us safe. You know, that's a lot of work, it's a lot of responsibility. And a lot of people don't like the police just because we have a badge and a, a blue uniform, and I don't know how to get them to wanna join us, other than say, it's a great team, come check us out. Okay, so enough recruiting. Did that answer your question? Okay. Can I read the next one?
I will say that, um, I, I completely agree with everything that you just said, um, deputy. And I would also say that, um, having more of the community events, like you had discussed, and bringing them into the police station, I think it kinda takes away that bad taste in your mouth of what, um, police are, what they do, what we think. I mean, we, I will say there is just a lot of, um, things that have happened to different communities, um, different situations that have arisen where the police have been a part of it, or when you look back at how it was created
Right.
and what was created for that task force. So I think that what you all are doing now and what you have planned to come, I think will help, um, people say, hey, I think I might, I do wanna be a police officer. I think I might wanna do this, so, um, I, I look forward to that happening. I look forward to you all having those events and inviting the community in, 'cause you don't know what you don't know.
Right.
And, um, it's about forming relationships and connections, so I appreciate that.
Yep, well, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, for joining us this evening. Uh, deputy, out of, it seemed like a lot of officers, unfortunately, that we lost because of the extensive and great training they receive to get picked off by the departments and other agencies, uh, do you have the number of how many left before the required five years? Uh, do you have that offhand, or do you have an idea? If not, do you know if we are intentionally going after those funds once they leave before training?
We, we go after some of them. Some of it doesn't make a lot of sense to go after, the economics of it. We're not really in the business of suing police officers in courts.
They wouldn't be our officers anymore, though, right?
They would not, but, but there is still that.
We are in the business, though, it is a business.
Right, so there's another avenue we have not yet gone down that's more controversial about seeking reimbursement from the municipality that took our officer. The window is shorter.
Okay.
But, but, um, I am unaware of any police bureau in Pennsylvania exercising that right under Act One Twenty. But I think for good reason, because they, it will go back and forth between them. But, uh, but we have explored the question, we've never pulled the trigger on it. And it, it is supposed to reimburse us for part of our training cost.
I could imagine we're probably in the millions we're owed at this point.
Wouldn't be the millions, but the way the formula works. But, uh, but, but it has to be in the first two years, you know, that, that happens. It's, it's not five years. So, um, and, you know, it's, it's a little vague, 'cause it's untested. What are, what counts as the training cost? Um, so, but, uh, but municipalities suing each other isn't the best, as it goes between.
I agree, but I think it's just as unethical to pick off officers because they're better qualified or trained also. So it's like a, if it's a policy written, it has to be enforced some way.
They're doing, they are not going to the expense to train people. They let us bear that cost. And, uh, that is the simple reality of what's been going on. But the recruitment problem isn't just in Harrisburg, losing the officers. Just, I mean, we've, we've looked at a lot of stuff.
We recruit them, but we don't retain them. I think the retention is the issue.
I, I think it's both. Uh, it's, it's both, you know, I mean.
I agree, it's a mixture of both.
Yeah, central Pennsylvania State Police has, I forget how many empty budgeted spots.
But we both will agree that the policy is on the books and we could in some way take action.
On the books, we could take action, we could pursue, pursue litigation. Uh, whether, when we're done, we would have
Right.
gotten any money back or broken even on the process of the cost of going through the court system is hard to know. Just like, just like the administration can't write a check here, and it's the same everywhere, for funds that are not appropriated, collecting on a judgment against a government entity is a very legally challenging thing to do. The only one I know where they moved for execution, it took fourteen years to get to the point where they had what's called a writ of execution on a judgment. Um, and that actually led that municipality into bankruptcy.
Wouldn't it be similar to a non-disclosure, though? If I'm, uh, signing up for a position and agreeing not to do a certain action in a certain amount of period of time, and I violate?
So, so what we do is we retain the monies that they would normally have gotten paid out, and a lot of times that is the majority of the what, of the money. It's just not, it's just not quite the whole five thousand.
Okay.
You know, so, so I'm saying, it really is, you know, if it's down to eleven hundred dollars, do you sue someone for eleven hundred dollars? 'Cause the cost, you gotta file, pay, file in court, you gotta go after them, you gotta go find them.
I agree, but I would say that my energy, just me personally, I wouldn't say I wouldn't go after it 'cause it's not worth it. I would pursue it so others wouldn't follow that suit.
I, I understand the philosophy, and I probably was in the same place you were, maybe eight years ago. But I got, I, I've, I've had a few bumps along the way, to tell them, you know, about which, where we put the resources we have.
But you're not saying we can't do anything?
I'm not saying we can't do anything. I think if the right case comes along, it's the right situation, you know, you know, that discussion has to happen. But I think the whole city has to kinda be on the same page with it. I, I don't think it would be, uh, our office simply taking it and saying, we're gonna do this without everyone signing on.
'Cause I think the great men and women, they, you know, every day put their badge on, they go out, their lives are at risk. So it's kinda, it, I, I just definitely respect it and understand it. And to see a lot of them take the action for whatever benefits, or, you know, they get a better medical here, or they get ten thousand more there. You know, the city of Harrisburg, we're the capital, you know? Have integrity when you're here, and hopefully we can retain you and grow together. And, you know, um, that's just one point, though, that's just me. But then also, thank you, thank you, though, Solicitor Grover. Um, deputy, um, a lot of, a lot of the conversation we hear, I, I, it kinda funnels back into almost three years ago when we were working towards that junior academy public safety, um, going into the schools, really working. Constantly, session after session, we hear that need. So hopefully, we can open up, reopen that conversation and, you know, try to gear back towards that way. 'Cause at the end of the day, if we want more officers from the city, we do have to show them how great these positions are and how great of a career it is. And unfortunate, a lot of the residents' experiences are not the best, and that's to no one's, you know, fault. Um, but that's the typical interaction on the outside. So they just need to see more positive interactions and more engagements. Um, and, uh, Captain, thank you for joining us. I just wanted to know, when you had took over the CSA or the Community Service Division, did the roles change from yours to the director of, um, the actual, uh, system or Ms., Ms. Houston? Because it'd be great for her to be here and present for the CSAs as well.
Did the roles change?
Like, did your roles change? Did your scope of work change? Did her scope of work change?
No.
'Cause I feel like I'm seeing her less.
No.
Okay. Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. If we can move on to the next question, then.
And if I may, uh, for Councilmember Rodriguez, you asked how many of the losses for twenty-twenty-three of the seven? Looking at my, uh, lined-out notes here, s, of the seven people, five were five years or below. In twenty-twenty-two, the five people who left, all of them, oh, no, I'm sorry, four of the five were under five years. Okay. Yes, sir.
I had a quick question. I'm sorry, I don't mean to stop you. But, um, how old do you have to be to be a community service aide? Can you be eighteen years old, or is it twenty-one as well?
Just an adult, man, eighteen? I think it was eighteen.
Eighteen?
I don't know.
We're gonna, we're gonna go with eighteen.
Okay, so how does that look like getting into the school district for that and trying to recruit them there?
Well, our current staff of CSAs, none of them are near eighteen years old.
No.
I think you're slotted.
They are not. They're early twenty-one years old.
Yes, yes.
The youngest was in their twenties.
In their twenties, but how does that, I mean, since that is an avenue they can go, can, could that be a way to, um, go into the high schools for recruitment with the community service aides, or?
Well, I know that, uh, one of the questions that was asked was what are some of the things that the CSAs do? And one of the things that they do is those career fairs.
Okay.
So that's another way for them to meet any and everybody out there to let them know what it is. You know, I will say that when it comes time for the community service aides, we definitely wanna get the right person
I agree.
in, in that position. It took a while, uh, to even, uh, get to the point where I had, as far as I'm concerned, two of the best that we just recently hired. It's gonna take a, it's gonna take a certain, um,
Person.
Well, it's gonna take a certain mentality. And dare I say, it's gonna take, um, a certain amount of love for this community to understand, uh, what the community's going through, to have the patience. And that's, that's it right there, that's, there it is. To have the patience to talk to them, allow them the vent, allow them to get all that energy out of the way so that it then opens up dialogue to get to the root cause of the problem. Now, not saying that an eighteen-year-old couldn't do it, but I don't know too many eighteen-year-olds that have that amount of patience just yet. I don't wanna pick on, you know, any, any millennials or Gen Z's or, or anything like that, because let's face it, we're in a, we're in an age now where it's that instant gratification. I need instant gratification. If I can't have it, I don't wanna stay here any longer than what's necessary. I'm on to the next thing to give me that. So when you're talking about, you know, my CSAs, I wanna make sure that they have that right temperament.
I agree with that.
I wanna make sure they have that right temperament, the ones that are willing to listen, talk, understand that this is, you know, it's not an aggressive act, this, they're just frustrated, you know?
I agree with that. And then I, because they're not coming with as much experience sometimes as being an eighteen-year-old, right? A little bit more impulsive, we're still growing. But then on the flip side, there are those eighteen-year-olds who been through a lot, seen a lot, and could come with some type of perspective, but also can allow their other community members in their age group to watch them be leaders, which also can strike a chord. You know, I can get everybody, but if you get just one that can strike a chord in someone else, it kind of motivates. So I, I agree with you on both points, but I'm glad that it can start at eighteen if possible, 'cause there could be that special eighteen-year-old that fits that qualification and can say, okay, I wanna pursue this and I'm allowed to, I'm, I'm at that age level. Or I wanna be a police officer, so let me start here and then, you know, see where I can go from there, so, you know.
I'm glad you brought that up, because that is a good stepping stone, right there. Because if you can get the community aspect underneath of your belt to understand it from both points of view, then yeah, I would, I would definitely sign off on that person's springboarding to the next level of being a police officer.
That's great. Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
I just wanted to double-check the age, was it eighteen or twenty-one? It's twenty-one, twenty-one? Okay, okay. For the CSAs.
But unlike the police, the police is by state law. The age for these are negotiated as part of ASME job descriptions.
Okay.
So if there was a genuine determination that that was something the police would wanna do, they'd go back to ASME and negotiate that.
Perfect, that's awesome. Would that, uh, Cap, was that something you would consider, even lowering the age?
Actually, I think I'd like to stay right at that twenty-one mark. Um, but I do like the whole ideal of being able to communicate with them and get their minds wrapped around it.
Yes.
'Cause a lot of the conversations that I have with them in the community is, I'm, I'm like, if you have the... Cause a lot of the conversations that I have with them in the community is, I'm, I'm like, if you have the aptitude, go to college. I'm pushing them in that direction. Go to college, go to college, go to college. Get away, meet, greet, learn different things. And then if you're still interested, come on back, get your foot in the door. That's where I'm at with it.
Then college isn't fit for every young mind in our community. Some are looking for a direct career path cause of their upbringing. If they have that gap, that could potentially be dangerous for them depending on what situation they're in. Um, would you consider allowing the CSAs to be a part of the parent task force at all? Cause that'd be a great way to.
Actually, when we were here, uh, just a, what, a few, last week?
Yeah, yeah.
Talking about the parent task force?
Yep.
Yeah, I got two of them that, uh, we're gonna be bringing them up to be good CSAs.
That'd be great.
And then as soon as I, as soon as I feel like they have that down pat, they are going to slide right on over to that.
That's awesome.
And they're also going to be assisting with the GVI. They're also gonna be those credible messengers.
Yep.
That's why, that's why that hunt that I was on to find the, the two right ones?
Yep.
Oh, I, I got several things planned. Yes, I do.
That's amazing. Well, thank you. I, I look forward to hearing some of those plans and helping work them out along the way. Thank you.
My door is open to you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I have a follow-up question regarding the credible messengers. I know that they are roles we've talked about, um, during the quarterly reporting process. So it's my understanding of what I just heard that the most recent CSAs will double as credible messengers. Is that correct?
There is a possibility that they will double as credible messengers, especially with the two that we just hired because of what they've gone through, because of their background, because of what they mean to this community. They're perfect.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Number nineteen. Can you provide your two thousand twenty-four departmental goals and measures of success of these goals if applicable? Uh, there are seven goals. I'll go through them if you, oh, I'll take questions at the end if that's okay. Goal one, retain Bureau of Police employees, FOP, ASME and management, and recruit to build a full complement of employees to ensure efficient law enforcement service to the city of Harrisburg. The priority fills for two thousand twenty-four are patrol officer, which were minus nineteen. Our goal is three for January, ten for July. Detectives, we're down two. We want to fill them in two thousand twenty-four. Forensic investigator, we're down one. It's a goal. I'm not sure we're gonna meet that one. Community service aides, we're down one currently.
Down one.
We will, uh, fill that one. Goal two, cease utilization of metro functions within the Bureau of Police by transitioning to Tyler Technologies, CODI RMS, Record Management System. Power time and other commercial off-the-shelf software to perform the metro functions in a more modern, efficient manner. So right now, we're still using our legacy Metro every day. Every day. Uh, so we have made strides and plans, uh, and it's very executable in the first quarter of two thousand twenty-four. Expect to be not having to utilize Metro. Yep. That's what's gonna happen. Goal three, provide increased police information to citizens regarding events, incidents, events and procedures via the public-facing side of Power DMS and Crime Watch. Provide crime mapping via Crime Watch for citizen utilization and review. Goal four, conduct police lobby remodel and move the evidence room from the basement of the Public Safety Center to the first floor. The plans for that are complete and awaiting final city approval of contract. I did talk to Dave Baker today. He's a Director of Facilities. Cause I, I told him, hey, I put that in there and he's like, that's fine. Uh, it already is out for bid. So it, it is moving along. Goal five, continue to work diligently, work homicide investigations, maintain a homicide clearance rate well above the national average. National average in two thousand twenty-two was fifty-two point three percent. Um, this year, I think we're eight of twelve for a clearance. But the secondary goals to meet that are, there's a laundry list, I'm not gonna go through them. Staff the Criminal Investigation Division by filling two detective vacancies, one supervisor vacancy and one forensic investiga- forensic investigator vacancy. Maintain training of current CID staff and add one police polyg- 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 they give polygraph exams. I never could say that word. Increase technological capabilities of the Criminal Investigation Forensic Unit. Increase staffing in Street Crimes Unit. Maintain patrol saturation details. Diligently explore other patrol shift manning models to increase the number of patrol officers on the street on a shift. And last for that is upgrade our current body worn cameras to newer technology and that is a planned lifecycle replacement. And if we can get our local law enforcement, uh, support grant approved or awarded, there is money in there to pay for that entire upgrade and it won't cost the city anything. Goal five, I'm sorry, goal six, utilizing GVI methodology, increase use of technology, improve training and refine investigative techniques to reduce gun violence in the city of Harrisburg. Goal seven, maintain and improve community service aides integration into the neighborhoods and conduct more neighborhood events within the Community Services Division. Those are our two thousand twenty-four goals. Questions?
I had one. Do you wanna, okay. Thank you for going over those goals. I appreciate that for myself and the community. I just have one additional question with the officers on the street on a shift. I know we've been talking about that patrol officers. Um, that's been a conversation, so I do appreciate that being one of your goals. What will that look like, um, per se with the patrol? Like, where would they patrol at? How often? Times a day? Like, what could the community, um, look forward to seeing, um, that look like?
Well, what it is said is there, is, you know, there are seven police districts. Our goal is to fill each of those districts with one officer for a shift. And plus there are several ancillary positions like a van driver and there's backup units within there and forensics and K nine, so. But if a call comes in downtown, like right here at the City Government Center, it's District One. There's an assigned District One Officer. They handle that call. Okay, so it's, it's basically, it's, it's how we divide the city for efficient workflow. Who doesn't want more? The more police you have, the more time you can spend on investigations, the quicker you are to respond to them. Is, if District One is tied up and the other uptown officers are tied up also, that call has to sit there until one of the, one of them becomes free. Or depending on the call, maybe two of them become free. So what we started looking at and we've, we've, uh, we've bantered about several police manning models in reference to what other shift, shift ideas can we come up with to better or increase the amount of officers on the street? All through two thousand twenty-three, we, uh, the Captain Reform Patrol, Ta, had basically wanted to try a pilot twelve-hour program. And there's so many different options and models to that. We had to pick one. We met with the, the Union a couple of weeks ago to, uh, at least come up with an idea and a plan based off of conversations we had in Labor Management. Our next Labor Management meeting will present those ideas to the body. Uh, but we have a decent plan, I think, to, for two thousand twenty-four, s- just try a pilot program to see if, how it'd actually work. We're gonna take two officers, I'm sorry, two supervisors and eight officers. We're gonna assign them to the twelve-hour shift, uh, covering some critical districts within the city. And we're gonna see how it works for a three-month period. If it is successful, that is just the start of a very long process. In other words, we have to go back, negotiate with the Union in reference to what that will look like. Make recommended changes to the contract lang- language, has to get through the Labor Management process, has to pass a body or vote of the FOP body to, for, uh, positively for that to happen. And then we could probably execute that in two thousand twenty-five or two thousand twenty-six. So, wh- and we have to really look at it like, will it really increase numbers of patrol officers on the street, which is, would be beneficial?
I agree.
So that's what that's looking like.
Okay, that, thank you for that. Um, my other question pertaining to that would be also, um, during school hours, I know we have the crossing guards and working with the school district. I know we need more. But beside the, the crossing guards, are we patrolling in the hours the kids are walking to school or coming home from school? I've, Harrisburg School District doesn't have buses per se, not enough, let's, let's say that.
Right.
And not to say everything that goes on with them is our issue, but then it kinda is because that's our population that we're serving. So I've noticed just as a resident, um, kids as young as five, you know, walking to school.
A long ways.
A long ways. I mean, through the park, um, walk with siblings that are maybe younger than them sometimes or, um, same age, dropping one off, going to the other school. And, um, I think for their sake, cause not their fault. And it's sometimes not their parents' fault either. If I'm working two or three jobs, I can't get you to school. You know, that, that's the, the community we live in right now. And, um, are we, are we patrolling doing those hours? Do we have enough to do that? Is it something, um, you know, we're able to do just to make sure, you know, our kids are protected, um, to and from school?
Yeah, it's a great question and we have met a little bit this year, a lot more the year before in reference to, and we agree, safe corridors for kids to get from home to school and back. The districts, the seven districts I described earlier, they're not, they're designed geographically. They're not designed around schools, uh, churches, wa- shopping, whatever. It's a geographical designation to, to help us manage the call volume and, uh, assign specific resources to an area. I will say that in reference to getting kids to and from school and patrolling the schools, the school crossing guards, uh, has gone back and forth between the, the Bureau of Police, the school district. Back to Bureau of Police, back to the school district. Now it's back with the Bureau, the city Harrisburg Bureau of Police. And at least they're sharing, we're sharing the cost, we're trying to, uh, I know Russ and Sardan have worked hard to get people to, uh, apply for those positions. If you live in a neighborhood, it's a pretty nice part-time job. You can walk out your door.
Yeah, I agree.
Help the kids get across the street. But you gotta be there. The kids are counting on you cause we, we know distracted driving these days is a very dangerous thing. So between the school crossing guards, the community service aides who, I will say, I think they do a wonderful job in schools, but that's not what we want them doing full-time. They have other duties and assignments outside of the schools that they're responsible for and they do a good job with. But they're also, they, they cannot double nor is it their job to be Harrisburg's security officers. Getting to the, the police in the schools. We do not have school resource officers. We have community policing officers, undermanned, I will admit, that go to the schools and probably have our greatest interaction in there, but there's not enough of them. If you remember back in the old days, we had school resource officers and there was a lot of them and they, that's what they did every day.
I have one in mind, yeah.
So, and putting all that together, when the, s- when the kids are in school and they're being dropped off and then when they're taken out of school and we all know the early Wednesdays and, um, but i- in the days, there's always patrol officers on the street. I mean, do the officers go to the school dismissals? Working with the school district, there are certain times and days under certain conditions where they're like, we would like you to be here because of this. And we assign officers to do that detail. Other than that, it's left to those district officers to go to the schools and interact, uh, either with the school principals, administrators, teachers, whatever it may be. And like I said, yeah, we'd love to have more police officers, we'd love more peace. It'd be great to have a, a police officer outside of school every morning and when they, but that's just not realistic, it's not possible. Can we do that on a part-time basis? There are certain schools that we go to, uh, at dismissals. Just because we know that there are potentially issues at times. And, uh, they know where to go and when this, luckily, send, there's some staggering of those for the critical schools that we wanna cover. I'd rather not get into which ones those are.
Oh, I know.
But at the end of the day is like, yeah, we're aware of the issues. We try to manage it the best we can. I think the combination with the school crossing guards is gonna help. The CSAs do a wonderful job with the schools, but like I said, that's not their main job. Yet they go out there and do that stuff. The police officers, the CP officers who go to the schools, interact with them is, is helpful. And the district officers being available, but they're beholden to those calls for service. So if there's a serious traffic accident, they're not gonna be able to go to a school dismissal unless there's a fight and then a bunch of officers have to respond and try and deal with the situation with security, the teachers, potentially the CSAs. So that's the, that's the best answer I can give you in a, a fifty-thousand-foot view.
No, it was under, I understand that. I appreciate that, um, cause it was something I was wondering just from what I was seeing with the, um, before and after school and, and so many kids that walk home and I know a while back, there was some danger, um, danger going on with, um, uh, students being, trying to be picked up or pursued by unknown strangers.
Yep.
Um, I got a, a few of those phone calls from the school district and it was, of course, during walking to school and then I'm coming home and then with it being dark, um, earlier, um, some people have after school. Um, I, you know, I was just wondering how we were dealing with that as, um, a police community. Like I said, I know everything that can't fall on you all. It's not all, you know, they do need a bus system. That will alleviate some issues, but, um, I just didn't know how we were answering those calls too with so many young children walking to school on their own.
There's a lot.
There is.
The majority of walk. There's some buses, but like you said, they're pretty minimal.
Yeah, you have to, um, I know with Math and Science Academy, they come from all over the district. So if you live uptown and you're coming there, you're gonna be bused. But like, for instance, my daughter who goes there, she can't be bused. They say she lives too close. But for me, I wouldn't let her walk through Bellevue or Upmarket at her age by herself to go to school. So, but if she had a bus, then I could say, hey, lock the door, get on the bus.
Yep.
Hey, you can put your sister on the bus, but I can't say walk your sister down to school and then walk yourself back up the street. I, you know, um, I, I couldn't imagine that, but there are some parents who have to have that reality. And, um, I think all we can do as a community is try to protect them. So I didn't know, you know, how we were looking at that or what some steps were, but.
You know, there, at the end of the day, like also is, it's, it's a school crossing guard program. It, it's a great part-time job. It, if you live near, and there's, was it twelve intersections, I think?
Yep, twelve intersections.
Yeah.
And we're just having difficulty getting people to take these jobs.
Yeah.
Yeah. Twenty dollars an hour.
It's good pay. I mean.
Yeah.
Morning and the afternoon and when school's off, so are you.
It's not hard at all.
I don't have a card, but if you could put that on the website, that'd.
I know. It's like, where do we recruit for that? Like, where can we go to? I don't know because.
Eighteen-year-olds that graduate, if you want a part-time job, there you go. I mean, that's a, that's a, that's a good part-time job.
That is a good part-time job.
You know, and, and that position is still open, so if you know anybody.
I know. I was, I, I wonder if any of them are allowed to, that are in high school right now, allowed to take those jobs and then go to school if they're near a school. I mean, sometimes they do the, um, and I'm not gonna say the program right, but sometimes you're allowed to take on a career and then go into school. I.
Back in my day, they called it the co-op.
There we go. Okay, that's what, I had a co-op in school, so I don't know if some of them can take on a co-op and then go into school. Okay.
The only, the, I don't see that being a problem. The only issue is, is that we're trying to fill certain time slots.
Right, that they may be.
But at this particular point in time, if they're able to say, hey, I can definitely do that, that morning shift, which is from seven AM to nine thirty AM.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And after.
And then try to find, then try to find other people to fill, fill the other shifts. We were trying to find someone that can do both shifts. Especially that Wednesday is, throws a lot, throws a wrench into it.
Yeah, it does.
With, with school being early, early dismissed every single Wednesday, that twelve-thirty to two-thirty slot. You know what I mean? That's the one that'll probably be the, the hardest. But at this particular point in time, since we're just having those type of difficulties, yeah.
Yeah. Well, thank you. That's it for me.
Yep.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Deputy, does Tyler Technology integrate with any other software we're using or is there any way to consolidate how much software we're using? So we can streamline a few things? Like, once we get shop, shop, shop spot up and running, would that integrate? Um, and does anything overlap now that we could kind of consolidate?
No.
Okay.
Um, no.
And then, um, And then um, have you, so I know our dispatch comes through the county still, correct?
It does.
Um, have we ever considered using the CADs that Tyler Technology provides, the um, the computer-aided dispatch?
No.
Okay. Terrible?
Not at all.
Okay.
Uh, uh, no, we didn't look at it. Uh, the Bureau of Police did have its own communication center, uh, multiple years ago due to costs.
Yep.
And I believe Chief Enterline had uh, taken Mayor Williams out to DEMA, their dispatch center, and explained, they have great difficulty in filling those jobs because it's twenty-four seven. Uh, there's a personnel cost there and the equipment costs for the radios themselves and the encryption systems is very high.
That's full dispatch, I meant just using the computerized, um, generated software that's already in Tyler.
When someone calls, oh.
Yeah, cause Tyler has it actually integrated, um, the CADs. I guess that's another conversation.
How do you say this? Utilizing CODI is, it's an, it's a, it's an okay system. It, it fits our needs, but it doesn't do all the stuff that Metro did.
Gotcha.
That was a, built for the city.
Yep.
We're using a commercial office shelf and we're used to being pampered and uh, hey, this works really cool and it works great for us. Now it, yeah, we can't do that. Every time we wanna build an integration in with a different software system, there's a cost.
Right.
And I do like CODI, but they sock it to us.
Do you feel it's efficient as of right now?
Sufficient?
Yes.
I do.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, I believe we're ready for the next question.
Uh, number twenty was, can you look back at your twenty twenty-three department goals and provide an update on your completion or progress toward these goals? So I did, I listed some of them, one was retention. I said, we did not meet that, we discussed that earlier. I did go over the, the, the losses already. So basically, we didn't meet it. Uh, we wish we'd do better in retention. Uh, one was increasing technology within Bureau of Police. I believe we met this goal with the addition of Cell Bright cellphone downloading software and moving toward a new crime mapping, uh, crime scene mapping software, body worn camera upgrades and license plate readers. This area should continue, continue to improve dramatically uh, in twenty twenty-four also, which was another one of our goals twenty twenty-four, was to continue to increase the technology within the Bureau of Police. Increase saturation patrols to increase officer presence in neighborhoods, conduct directed foot patrols, arrest wanted individuals and respond to and investigate gun violence calls for service. Goal met. Twenty-eight patrol-oriented saturation patrols were organized and conducted in twenty twenty-three. We thought they went very well. There was a lot of success with them and when you look at, that's the hard part about crime numbers is like, why are they there? How do they, there's so many factors, you, is this one of the things I, that helped? I think it is. So it was one of the goals we wanted to do. Sergeant Pierce, Akakon Burton, you know, did a good job putting those things together and making them happen for twenty twenty-three and those will continue for twenty twenty-four. Any questions on those goals? Uh, number twenty-one, outside of National Aid Out, can the police department provide information on our community policing and community outreach efforts? The Community Service Division has always made themselves available to the community via security checks, enrichment of soft-targeted establishments such as schools, businesses and residences. This is to include Alice and active shooter training. They continue to participate with various career days and speaking engagements. These services are provided by the community policing unit. The CSAs continue to meet and greet the community daily. They go to participate in career day events, park and recreation events, fire events, assist with quality of life issues, attend career fear, career fairs, help identify community organizations that aid the needs of the community, work with local churches feeding the community and assist the police and residents with translating Spanish to English. In addition to that, both the CP and CSA units hold community barbecues to foster enhanced relationships. This is on top of their daily requirements.
Any questions?
Number twenty-two, can the police department provide an update the CSA pilot program? This should include goals, past, present and future, accomplishments and measurements of success toward these goals. The CSA is no longer a pilot program. It has proven to be a valuable asset to the Harrisburg Bureau of Police. Since its initiation, the CSAs have gone through three directors, each having a different idea as to what the CSAs should be doing. Currently, the direction that is in place now is all about providing, receiving and disseminating information. Keep in mind, this is something that was, was being done, but the information wasn't being funneled in a consistent way. They have always believed and continue to believe that a lot of the issues that the residents and business owners within the city have been dealing with doesn't necessarily require police assistance. The CSAs have been a bridge for information. Just looking at the quality of life issues alone, trash, streetlights being out, overgrown grass, neighbors placing their receptacles, trash and recyclables on neighboring properties, holding parking spaces regardless of weather conditions, handicap parking, loitering and trespassing issues, non-reportable accidents, helping to move along school students at dismissal, loud music, speaking to neighbors when they are unable, unwilling to do so on their own, checking on our homeless community daily, et cetera. The CSAs have allowed the officers to have extra time, which is extremely valuable, conduct, to conduct more in-depth investigations and have provided information to further assist them. Their accomplishments are being measured by how they are being received in the community and how they support the Bureau. As we continue to spread the CSA influence, we should be able to funnel all non-police matters directly to the Community Service Division. The future for the CSAs is to grow the division to fourteen, thus expanding out capabilities to engage and provide extended services to the community, expanding the hours of operation by producing shifts that will cover from zero seven hundred to twenty hundred hours, which is seven in the morning to eight at night, during which time, the CSAs will have a constant presence within and throughout the community. We would like to get to a point where a CSA is readily available to respond to and assist with issues that are in progress rather than dealing with them after the fact. By doing this, it should, would aid in lowering the temperature between neighbors, thus producing a community that trusts, respects and appreciates the intervention before it reaches a critical juncture, junction that would require police assistance. Your questions?
Thank you. Any questions?
Not a question, just more of a statement to the parking um, situation. I, I understand how tight it can get sometimes, but I, I think even when the, being a resident, this is me just taking the council hat off. I don't know, I, I think it's an old tradition, an unspoken law with lizard, you shovel yourself out, you put a cone, you put a chair. But just today, I got complaints that residents were doing it. There's no even inclement weather outside, so it's like, sometimes it can be a bit extreme and um, it, I know there's never gonna be a resolve for that, uh, unless we just open up more parking.
We, we have, um, the CSAs have done, have done a really good job, cause we're probably talking about the same individuals, um, talking to them, letting them know that, listen, you're about to head over to that side where the police are gonna come and issue you a citation. We know for a fact that this is your can, we know for a fact that you're doing it because you don't want nobody parking this space. It's a perfectly sunny day, listen, there's nobody there, somebody can park in this space. And, and you know, along with that parking is also the whole handicap thing.
Yes.
Uh, people not understanding that, listen, they have a handicap placard, so they can park there too. This is not your personal handicap space. The CSAs have been dealing with those issues. Uh, like I said, it's probably the same ones repeatedly, trying to get them to understand, providing them with the information, going on the approach that if you know better, you should do better. But when you look at that list that he just read off, there's even more to it that can, that can be added that they do in the, in the course of eight hours.
And Captain, just for the residents that are watching tonight, it is technically illegal to do such thing, correct?
Very much so.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions?
I don't really have a question. Um, I guess more of a thought, uh, when it comes to, to the CSA program. Um, I guess the way I envision it, well, what I envisioned when it started and what I envision now are different, um, just because of the changes that have happened over time. Uh, I kinda see an expansion of this program, but not in the police department. Um, I would like to see community service aides in different departments, right? So the public works, you don't have to send someone out by a trash can, because the public works department should have a CSA that's able to handle that. Um, the communications and parks and wrecks can have CSAs or, you know, community service aides, because they're not just servicing the police department, they're servicing the community, they're servicing the residents of Harrisburg. And so disseminating that information from different departments, I think, would be really important too, helping to get out information about the different events that are coming up in parks and wreck, um, about, you know, the language classes happening at um, Reservoir Park. I think those are really important and having that liaison, I think would help the city in general, not just from a police perspective and getting the information out from this department. Uh, cause it does seem like a lot of the things that you guys handle aren't just police matters. Um, you're getting calls about other departments and you're sending out CSAs to handle that. So I could see this program expanding in other departments, not under the police department. So that's kinda where I see it growing at, um, but just my thoughts.
Alright, I guess we're ready for the next question, if there are any.
Uh, next question is twenty-three, do you feel the CSA program has complimented the police department in which ways? And what I basically wrote down was like, yes, please see the answer to question twenty-two, which I just read and I prefer not to reread that. And I'm sure you would too. Is that acceptable? Okay. Uh, and then last question twenty-nine, for the police department, what, 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 what vehicles will be purchased using the Equipment Vehicles line? And in budget line four, five, three, zero, zero, four, Equipment Vehicle, there's a hundred ninety-three thousand budgeted in twenty twenty-four. This is for two police SUVs, one police K-9 unit and one unmarked street crime unit. That budget line changed significantly from the time we had planned to propose, um, but at this point it is one ninety-three, zero, zero, zero.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for the Bureau of Police? Saying none, thank you all for your presentation tonight. Thank you for being here. Um, we appreciate all the work that you do and I look forward to continuing to work with you.
I don't have a question, just a comment with the CSA program. I just really do appreciate um, the leadership that has um, been pushing it forward and what you've been doing with it so far. I, I've seen, um, like you said, you've hired some excellent CSAs. Um, I've seen them everywhere in the community, I have seen them at schools. They're very present and aware and so I just appreciate the direction that you have taken the CSA program and, and how the police department has allowed you to do so. So I just wanted to give you your flowers with that CSA program, that's not easy. And I just thank you for how you've come on board and um, been vigilant and you have a vision and you can see that, so thank you.
You're welcome. All that information? The stuff that you were talking about, that's why I make sure that they have all the information, so that when they go out there, they can pass that information on to others. So.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for being here tonight. Um, now that we have moved on to the Bureau of Fire, if you would introduce yourself, give us an overview of your department and then if you have a presentation.
Sure. Uh, Chief Enterline and I have with me tonight Deputy Chief Souter and we will present to you our twenty twenty-four budget request. I'm gonna give you a high-level overview. Um, would you like me to start with the questions that were asked of City Council?
I will let you lead the direction.
Okay, we will do that. Um, so the first question was, can you provide your uh, twenty twenty-four goals and measures of success uh, of these goals and objectives? Uh, our goals and successes are directly tied to our mission statement and I'll read that um, for the citizens and for uh, City Council. Harrisburg Bureau of Fire exists to serve the residents and visitors of the city of Harrisburg and the entire capital region. We accomplish this through a full-time career staffing model supplemented by volunteer contingent. Our team is comprised of well-trained, diverse and highly motivated individuals who provide services in fire safety education, fire codes enforcement, emergency management and all hazards response. And I think it's important to read that um, and let that sink in. Anything that we do from a budget standpoint, anything that we do on a daily basis has to comport with what's in the mission statement or it means nothing to the community. Uh, and that's what we strive to do um, on a daily basis. Um, some of our goals and objectives that were completed in twenty twenty-three, um, we've achieved and I think first and foremost, I've said this the last three quarterly reports, but we've achieved a zero fire-related deaths uh, in the city of Harrisburg for calendar year twenty twenty-three, uh, coming up on nearly two full years without a, a single fire fatality. Um, this would not be achievable if it were not for the well-trained and dedicated firefighters, our staffing and response times and our aggressive smoke detector installation program. When analyzing fire loss data and response times, our members continue to provide prompt and reliable services to our citizens, meeting our response time goal of five minutes or less ninety percent of the time, which comports with nationally recognized standards. Currently, the Bureau of Fire has an average response time to emergency calls of four minutes and thirty seconds. Training of both fire bureau members and the public has been a focus in twenty twenty-three. Our training programs internally have provided significant opportunities for our members to excel in their careers while also maintaining and brushing up on the basics of being a firefighter. We continue to provide fire safety training across the city, whether it's in an elementary school, having students visit the fire station, members providing annual refresher training in daycare centers, or conducting live fire, fire extinguisher training to employees of city businesses. These training programs are essential and a well-educated public helps to protect themselves from fire. The Bureau also works closely with the Bureau of Codes to address fire code and fire safety related issues, which is accomplished through frequent dialogue, combined inspections and identifying blighted properties that pose a danger to not only firefighters, but citizens as well. Fire Bureau management is regularly engaged in emergency management training and works cohesively with the Dolphin County Department of Public Safety to ensure that Harrisburg is prepared in the event of a natural or man-made disaster. A real high-level overview, I believe Council was briefed on uh, our current contract that will, I think that'll be down for ratification, uh, which includes a three-point-five percent pay increase for all IAFF members in twenty twenty-four, as well as lump sum longevity payments um, that start after five years uh, of a thousand dollars and then a hundred and fifty dollars per year on top of five years to a maximum of two thousand and fifty dollars. Uh, additionally, the clothing allotment was increased from five hundred dollars per member to seven hundred and fifty dollars per member. And one of the other, um, where, where we've uh, really analyzed is from an overtime standpoint with the recall of three firefighters and one officer on the first alarm assignment. Uh, that was actually something that we uh, as management were excited about and, and, you know, were, were part of because we realized the number of firefighters coming into the city is diminished uh, and we still have residents that we need to, to tend to uh, in the event of a second incident occurring uh, within the city while we're committed on a, on a working building fire. That is about all I have is, is a broad overview of where we are. I do wanna highlight a couple of things uh, in our budget. We do have um, just in the past two weeks, um, two firefighters um, that came on a job in nineteen ninety have decided that they're gonna retire from the Fire Bureau uh, in early two thousand twenty-four. And we also received uh, just this week, uh, on Monday, the resignation. And we also received just this week, on Monday, the resignation of a fairly new firefighter who was hired in 2017, who's decided he is going to pursue a career in the police department in another municipality. So we will be losing three firefighters very early on. The good news to that is, we do have budgeted and will be able to hire six firefighters to fill those roles. So we had three positions that are vacant that you'll see in the budget, and then we will hire for these three. We're actually doing interviews starting next week for those positions. A couple of things in the budget, we really maintained a fairly flat-line budget for 2024 as far as that goes with some minor investments in capital for equipment that we need. One thing that we did not budget for, and we're hopeful that we will receive additional funding from the Commonwealth through the Commonwealth Fire Protection Agreement that we have, which currently is $5 million, we will be lobbying heavily on the governor and on leadership in both the House and Senate to increase that, and in the hopes that when that bill passes, when the budget bill passes in July, that we will be able to come back to Council and say, now we have some additional funds that we'd like to use for these additional projects, one of which will be the replacement of another piece of fire apparatus. We also have, and I think Council has seen it multiple times in some of our line items under miscellaneous contracted services, we have increased those line items over the last several years, and that is due to the fact that the Fire Bureau, under our emergency management umbrella, has been providing portable toilets for the homeless population in areas of the city. So currently, we have portable toilets in South Harrisburg, there's four of them down there, and we have two of them here on Market Square that actually required Judge Cherry to issue a, an amendment to his order from 2021 that did not permit us from putting any in downtown Harrisburg. So we do have two on Market Square that the Market Square Presbyterian Church really monitors and takes care of, and so we've been paying those out of our budgets. I just think it's important for Council to understand. We also manage the water in the South Harrisburg encampment through the fire hydrant, which gives them potable water to drink. However, that is removed due to freezing issues in the winter, and that was just removed on Thursday or Friday last week. And other than that, if there's any questions, we are happy to answer those.
Thank you. I don't have any questions. I'm going to open it up to my councilmembers, starting to the far left with our Public Safety Chair, Councilwoman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's great to hear that there are resources for the unhoused, although we always could do a bit more. We just were in session and that question came up, so it's good to know that us as a team are doing something directly to affect them in a positive way.
Yeah, and I think it's important to note, specifically as it deals with downtown, we have a order from Judge Cherry that we have to follow. And it's a very specific order, it's available online. And again, we, the Market Square Presbyterian Church went to him to issue a, an amendment to that order to allow those two portable toilets to be placed at the Market Square Presbyterian Church. It's a very exclusive area, it's a fairly large exclusive area downtown here.
Thank you for that. And I have no other questions. Deputy, I definitely need some, one of those for my glasses, too. But thank you, no further questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. President Bowers, any questions?
I don't have any questions. Thank you for making everyone aware of Judge Cherry's.
Order.
Order.
There we go.
Excuse me, doing too many things, but thank you.
Councilman Lawson.
Thank you, Vice President Green, and thank you, Chief Enterline. With the, the potable water, as we, as, you know, of course, it's freezing now, so we want to get rid of it. But are there other locations where we see that we may have a heavy unhoused population that we may be able to provide the same type of service through a hydrant?
Not currently. The majority of those unhoused have already access to that in South Harrisburg, and there's not another location that we've really seen the need. Working with our providers that are out on the street on a, quite frankly, a daily basis, taking care of those folks and seeing what their needs are. And through the wintertime, you know, with, once winter hits December 1st, those winter overnight shelters open up, so they also have additional resources that are available to them at those winter overnight shelters. So whether that's, you know, water, hot coffee, hot chocolate, tea, things like that. So those, while we give them that water through the summer, there's also those drinks available at those winter overnight shelters that aren't open and don't have services through the summertime.
Okay, great, thank you. That's everything.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ross.
Thank you for you both for being here tonight and giving a detailed look at what you were hoping for this year and what your goals are, especially budget-wise. I don't have any questions, but I do thank you for bringing to light also Judge Cherry's order, just to give the public a little bit more information. Sometimes we just don't know what we're allowed to do or not allowed to do, what kind of orders are out there. So it really, I think, helps us see, you know, what kind of pathways we can take with that. So thank you.
Sure, and it is our goal to continue to provide those services where we're permitted to and, you know, make sure that those, those folks are taken care of. And I believe that CASH does an amazing job as well, and we've partnered with them. Really, that partnership between the Fire Bureau under that emergency management umbrella and CASH grew through the pandemic. So if you look at any golden, you know, things that come out of COVID, I think that is one of them, that we've been able to really combine and help out where we can, you know, to those, not only shelters, but actually to the homeless, so.
Madam Chair, if I may, are we still, and I know it's a bit farther away from the south side, but are we still partnering for the showers on State Street?
Showers on, we are not doing anything with showers on State Street. The Downtown Daily Bread has showers available there. And I don't want to speak out of turn, I'm not sure where the other showers are located. Once the COVID pandemic was lifted, that opened some of those other shelters that weren't able to do it because of decon issues and things like that, which, you know, I should say, we paid for that through, with using CDBG monies, the decontamination of those shower facilities on a daily basis so that those homeless were able to be, have showers available to them on a daily basis through the pandemic.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Saying none, thank you, gentlemen, for being here tonight.
Thank you.
And thank you for all that you do.
We look forward to providing our quarterly report, which will have some great statistics on insulation of smoke alarms and what we believe that's going to look like in 2024.
All right, thank you. We look forward to it. Next, we have a presentation from the Bureau of Codes.
Good evening, City Council.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'll read the 2024 Codes Department potential goals.
If you could first introduce yourself.
I'm sorry, Anne Montgomery, Administrator for the Department of Codes.
Thank you.
Yes. The adoption of the 2018 International Property Maintenance Code, we hope to adopt. We will need that for the MUNIS system to be able, for the code officers to utilize and do their reports. Also, we'd like to digitalize all paper copies in the office. That'll open up a lot of square footage for us to be able to utilize. And then with that digitalization, I'm in trouble with that word, it'll be easier to access even when the code officers are out in the field, if that was necessary, to look at the history of the property. MUNIS Tyler system should be up in March for 2024 for the Codes Department to be able to utilize, and we hope that the code officers will be able to be out in the field with iPads, doing their reports, and able to email them directly to the property maintenance or the landlord-owner of the properties, along with the progressive inspections for rehabs and new builds. Funding for the codes officer certifications, since we're able to implement the code officers now not having to take 15 years to get their certifications, they're now able to get them within five years, so that'll be more education and more code officers that are qualified to do progressive inspections. It'll make the city safer and the public safer. And that's everything I have. One of the main things in the budget, I did budget more money for furniture and updated cameras for the Codes Office, along with more education since the certifications will be able to be acquired sooner. Any questions?
Thank you. I'm going to open it up to my colleagues first. I'll start to my far left again with the Public Safety Chair, Councilwoman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Director Montgomery, for joining us. It's a common theme, we're going to digitize the office, we're going to get this paperwork through. Do we have an idea when that may take place, once we get fully integrated, everything over, and just make everyone's lives a bit simpler?
So I have talked to IT, Nate in IT came up to our office, and there's a company in the city that actually came over to the office, and I believe also with the police, maybe, maybe with Mercantile, I think there was other departments that they met with, and kind of went through the process. So we would need the scanners and to be able to do that. So I'm hoping to get that done in 2024.
Is that, was that a service that we had to pay for, for them to come and kind of speak and train?
We will have to pay for that, and I think it's the state, I'm not.
It's a state agency, actually, that they invested in all the equipment, finished what they were doing, and now are.
We're talking about just scanning?
But it's not just scanning.
Okay.
It's a process so that it's findable, searchable, and there will be an agreement that comes to Council to do this, whether it's an intergovernmental agreement or an MOU, I don't know.
Besides paying for the software itself, we're not doing it.
It's not software, they're going to do it there.
Well, I mean, because we just got the new software, so we were thinking maybe that would take care of it, but we got to hire an outside entity to do.
For the historical record, we need to have the records for the properties in the system, and so this is to digitize them, make them usable.
Got you. So there's nothing the directors of the departments would do, we're getting an outside entity?
They'll be working to coordinate each department as they do it. I think they're either starting with police or codes.
Yeah, we do have to prep that, and then once we get so many done, it would be sent to the state agency.
Right.
And then they would do the scanning and filing, and then it comes back to us, and we would have to be stored.
It's supposedly very high-speed, high-volume.
Do you know if that would be like via cloud, hard drives that will get?
I don't know. I have, I'm not involved in the process right now.
Okay.
But, you know, but IT's been involved, Business Administrator's Office has been involved.
Just forward-thinking, just in case we have another mishap, like the flood, we won't lose any.
That's, I think, on everyone's mind.
Right, 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 thank you. I just wouldn't do my due diligence by an axe, thank you.
Yeah, it's actual, sounds like progress is coming on this, so.
That's good news, thank you.
My office would love to be rid of paper.
Absolutely. No further questions.
Thank you very much. I do have one question from Councilwoman Daniels for the Codes Department. It says she would like for the Codes to elaborate a little bit more on their projections related to revenue. So could you elaborate on your revenue projections?
Yes, so one of the bulkiest addition I put in was for additional office equipment, desks, conference room table, scanners for the, for desktop scanners, for us to be able just to scan from there, seeing that everything, I'm hoping, will be in the cloud and be able to go into the MUNIS system.
I believe that's the expenditure side. I believe she was looking more for the revenue projections, like the, I guess, increase in permit fees, like money brought in through permits, inspection fees, I believe that's the side she was looking at is.
There's really not an increase. There has been a change with the permit fee, instead of most of the cost being on the building permit, it's now going to be broken down where the electrical permits will have their own more increased fee, but that will make the building permit fee less than, because it's not combined anymore. Those are separated, the building permit fee, and then there'll be the electrical permit fee and the plumbing permit fee.
Okay.
Which is, it's very hard to explain, but yeah, it's not really an increase. It's going to kind of wash out the same.
Okay. I'm not sure if that answers her question. If so, I would ask her to reach out to you to get more of an explanation.
Sure.
Thank you. We will move on to President Bowers. Any questions or comments?
Just one question, you mentioned iPads, so I was curious to know, I don't remember in any of our quarterly reporting that you mentioned the use of iPads. I know we talked about laptops during the budget cycle last year, but when do you intend to purchase these iPads, and how many will be purchased?
Well, there'd be iPads for each code officer, and there's 11 code officers. There's actually one or two that already have one. The commercial inspector, I believe, has one.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Lawson, any questions or comments?
Yes. Thank you, Director Montgomery. I remember a time when we had an inspection for the sale of every property within the city. Are there any plans to ever go back to that type of a situation?
Like for the furniture we're replacing?
No, 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 I'm sorry. This is for, when we were, there was a time that Codes would inspect every home that was being sold within the city.
Okay, for the buyer's notification?
For the buyer's notification, there we go, buyer's notification. Are we planning to ever go back to something like, I know we were down code officers and that made it difficult, but as we're starting to get our complement back up, I just think it's something that could help us prevent some of the landlord-tenant issues we're getting because you have a lot of very inexperienced investors who are purchasing properties and not realizing what they're getting into until they, they own it and they've had someone move into it. So I think one thing that may help is if they see that inspection before they actually take ownership to say, hey, this may be more than you're, you're ready to bite.
Understood, yeah. So we used to do, if anybody bought a property in the city of Harrisburg, or was going to sell a property, I should say, we, as a code officer, had to go in and do an inspection of that property, and then they would have a list that they could give to the new owner, or they took that list and did the repairs before they sold it. The reason, so sometimes you'd have somebody that wanted to sell the property in a week, and so all of a sudden we're dropping what we need to do and going to do these inspections. It became so too much for us to be able to keep up with the rentals, with the amount of code officers we had, you know? So that is one of the, that's the big reason why that went away. It was more like we felt the buyer beware. It was their responsibility, if they're going to buy a property, to look into that property before they buy it, you know? So that we were able to keep up with the rentals.
And are we, and I don't remember the, what we were doing before with the rental inspections, is that a yearly inspection or?
That's once every five years.
Once every five years?
Yes.
Okay. Because then that becomes something that gets passed on, unfortunately, and I don't believe that, I understand it's not our responsibility, but it becomes our problem, because then our tenants move into these properties that haven't been properly inspected, because, like you said, someone buys it in a week because the seller says, I want to get my money. Because like you said, someone buys it in a week because the seller says, I want to get my money right away. The buyer comes up with the money, and then they put someone in there, and then we're finding out that we have really a property that's uninhabitable, that someone's living in there. And if we're doing the inspection once every five years, then that just leaves bad actors to be able to do it over and over and over again. That's, that's, it's really more of a comment. I just wondered if there was a way to get back to it and why I'm seeing without having that inspection in place, what problem it ends up causing many of our tenants who are finding themselves in a tough situation.
Yeah, I agree. And we can discuss that and look into possibly doing, bringing that back. But right now, there has been no discussion of that, but we can look into that.
Okay, great. That'd be, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ross.
Thank you, Vice President Green, and thank you Director Montgomery for being here. I do not have any questions. Mine have been asked and answered, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. One, I know, I believe it was last year, you discussed about ensuring all the paperwork, especially like the permit applications in your office were multilingual. How are you doing on that goal?
I know the building permit is, I'm not sure about all of them. I can follow up with Marlene, not Marlene, Melissa, thank you, yes, with getting the other ones done. We've done some of the stop works. We've done that in multilingual. And there are a couple of other ones, but yeah, we can, we can do better with that.
Okay. If you could follow up with us and let us know where you are with the goal and how you plan on accomplishing it. Because I know a lot of people that are coming into the city don't speak English. And so doing those permit applications and things, they have trouble with, and sometimes it just means they don't do them, which means that unsafe work might be being done in the city. It also means we're not collecting those fees. And then the second question is just one that I ask of all departments, which is if you can look back at your 2023 goals and tell us how, how much progress you've made towards them or if you've accomplished them.
Sure. So yes, in 2023, we updated the condemnation list. That has something that was left behind, say around 2017. We had so much turnover with the administrative assistants. And it really got, it was on an Excel. And it got, I can't find the right word, but somebody was in there messing around with it and it just was, the information got all mixed up. So we have a new condemnation list with more information, saying when the last time it was cited, when the last owner bought it. So we've added additional information and it is completed. Now, every Monday, we get an update from Dolphin County. IT sends it up to us on who the new owners are. So anybody that's bought a new condemnation property, we are sending out the change and notifying the new owner that it is condemned. They have so many days to bring it into compliance. So that's a big change also. But yeah, we, we've updated, updated it, and I'll be using that for the demolition also. There's actually six hundred condemned properties. Yeah, it's a lot. Now, not all those are the collapsing ones, you know. There's a rating between one and five. And I would say there's about a hundred and fifty of the more collapsing ones, the worst ones. So code officers paid to be competitive regionally. That was accomplished. Instead of the fifteen years, it was taken down to five years for them to be able to achieve the certifications that are required by LNI. And in addition to that, their pay would increase also, to be able to move quicker through that. The code officers are fully staffed. We had been down two. We just hired the last code officer two weeks ago, and we're continuing to train those two. The fee changes, we talked about that. That was passed and accomplished. Housing and Building Code Board of Appeals, there hadn't been a board for the last three years that has been fully staffed. Then we actually heard a hearing two weeks ago. The data analyst position was filled in eight, in, I want to say more like June. We were hoping to fill it in April. I believe it got filled in June. And that's working out well. He's doing the condemnation list and updating that, and he's like the lead role for the MUNIS training, to learn that from, to go to those trainings. We all try to get there, the managers, but not always can we be there. But the data analyst is there continually.
Thank you very much. I have a couple more questions. As far as the demolitions, have you begun working with the Department of Building and Housing just to strategically plan some of those demolitions so that we don't have just sporadic demolitions throughout the city and maybe can create larger blocks that may increase investment?
Larger blocks of?
Instead of knocking down one house on this street and one house on this street, if there are three houses that are condemned and able to be demolished on the same street or in the same area, maybe coordinating that instead of having little pockets throughout the city of demolished houses? Because we all know that with the cost of building houses now, that investors are looking for larger areas to be able to put their resources in one area instead of spreading them out. I know that's something we kind of talked about when we were discussing ARPA and the funding for ARPA and the demolition that was put in there. Is that something you've started to coordinate yet with DBHD?
So there's times where, like Tri-County may be working in an area, and we'll scan that area to see if there is a building that we can take down. It's unusual to find three in a row, you know, unless it was a fire. But it's unusual to find three in a row that are in that shape to be able to take down, even if there was a fire, unless it was a huge fire. The last one that I'm aware of was on Howard Street. And there was one, there was two that was already collapsing. So those were ruined by the fire. But the other one that was damaged, he's going to repair it and bring it back. So that's a possible two that I could take down. But the one woman had just recently bought that, and she was looking to bring that back. I don't know if that's still going to happen, but I'm going to contact her to see about taking it down or not, you know.
Okay. Thank you. That's, that's quite surprising, because usually when you see one falling down, it's more than one around it. I understand that there are issues with ownership and different things, but I think maybe exploring that, that opportunity would, would help the city and help neighborhoods, because unfortunately, I see houses come down and then it's just an empty lot that sits for years and years, because the cost of construction outweighs the value. So I'd like maybe us to explore that a little more. I think that it would be helpful. And I think we might be surprised to find out that there might be larger pockets than we imagine.
There are times, so let me just say, there are times where there may be more, but someone just bought it. And then it just, and it's, it, it just baffles me why somebody buys some of these properties. But on the other hand, that is tax money. So it's not like I want to discourage that either, you know. So, and, and some of them do come back to life. But there may be two in a row, but someone just bought it. So I kind of move away from that area then, because I'd rather take down two. And I'll see if that person is going to move forward with permits, you know, and try to repair it. And a lot of times, they do, but they run out of money then, too. So it is difficult to try to find those multiple ones in a row.
I completely understand. Perhaps we can look at using something like a land bank to start to acquire some of these properties that are just sitting vacant, so that they don't just get barred up and sit there and continue to be vacant, so that we can exercise our options and really help the city to grow. So I mean, obviously, that's, that's a little larger of a strategy, but it's something I think that we should look at as a city as a whole, but especially with the Codes Bureau. And then the last one is the number of planned demolitions for 2023.
Yes, so this year, we took down twenty-one.
Okay. And what about for 2024? What is our plan? I said 2023. I meant 2024. How many do we plan to take down for 2024?
So I'm pushing for thirty. I'm looking for more, for more demo contractors. I've been able to contact two. They said they were sending me the information. They have not yet. So I'm going to follow up on that. So I need more contractors. Also, Public Works said that they will have more people on the demo crew, so that that will move faster also.
Okay. And I said that was my last question, but I squizzed another one in at the bottom. So it's more of a comment and a question. I know when talking with residents, the biggest complaint that I hear is like response time. Like I contacted Codes and I didn't hear anything. What is our plan to reduce response time when residents make complaints? Especially like renters might make complaints about the house they're living in or a neighbor's house or something like that. What is our plan to reduce response times? Or what is our average response time for getting back to residents, and how do we track that?
That's a hard thing to track. Now, the code officers, a lot of times, people feel as though we're not doing anything, you know, but they, they don't see a change. But we have followed up. We sent out notices. Maybe we've written citations and maybe we've gone to court. But the person who may have complained never sees any of that, you know. I think where we could improve is maybe communicate more with the person that complained, you know, and to get back with them.
I definitely think that would help. I also think that it would be a great option for us to track it more so that, like, the codes officers, from the time they receive the complaint to their first contact with the landlord or with the property owner, I think that we can track that, and that's something that we can measure. And that's something we can, like, grade ourselves on, so that we can say, okay, well, our average response time is forty-eight hours or seventy-two hours business hours. And how can we get that reduced? But I do think we have to measure certain things, or else we never know if we're moving in the right direction. And that can be as simple as a spreadsheet of them marking when they got the notice and when they responded to it. So I definitely think it's something we can, we can do. That's all of my questions. I believe President Bowers has a question.
I have a question and a comment. So as a follow-up to that, do you believe that the use of additional technologies, such as the laptops and the iPads and the MUNIS transition will assist in evaluation and tracking?
I think it will assist. We're still learning about the MUNIS system to know what it can do. We're in the beginning stages of that, but there is a lot of hopes for that. I think an Excel sheet would be helpful also. A lot of times, you know, you do get a complaint, and I'm not trying to, you know, avoid the, somehow to resolve it, but there's times where you get complaints and it could go many different ways. You know, maybe nobody responds to you. Maybe nobody gets back to you. Or you decide that it's best to do a rental inspection. So they have to notify the tenants for us to be able to get in. It might take more time for that, you know. And then, once the rental is done, then you have to go back and follow up on those violations, if you found any, you know. So there's different scenarios of, of, sometimes it takes longer to resolve the complaint.
I completely understand that. I think tracking it, just to measure it, is definitely helpful. So it might be, it might be setting a goal that will respond to all complaints within forty-eight hours. And that could just be the initial contact, a phone call was made, a letter was sent. Just something was done, because then it helps to hold, hold you guys accountable to yourselves to say, if I receive a complaint, I have forty-eight hours to respond. It'd be like the police saying, well, I got a call, but it took a while to get out. I didn't come out for a few days. I'm sure they have measures to, to measure how long it took them to respond, just like fire has a response time. They can say, we responded within four minutes and thirty seconds. I think having that measure is important.
And then I would say they were probably responding to that within three days at the most, you know.
My follow-up question would then be, who would be responsible for inputting that data? And if it is not the administrative assistant and it is one of the codes enforcement officers and any of their duties and responsibilities change, I think it would be helpful to review the job description in that way with HR. My other comment was related to the land bank that was mentioned. So we do, the city does have a land bank, which we know. It is, or hasn't quite functioned, I think, as we expected. But that's not unique to the city of Harrisburg. Other cities are experiencing the same issues with their land banks. But I do think a plan beyond demolition is needed. So maybe that's not for codes. Maybe that is for the Bureau of Planning. But I just wanted to note and remind everybody that we do have a land bank, because it's often referenced as if it's a new tool. But we do have one. It's just not functioning at the level and the intensity in which I think everyone expected. I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments, Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Yes. Director Montgomery, out of the six hundred homes on the condemned list, are you aware of any that still have residents residing in them?
We are looking into that, yes. On some of the condemned properties, we are finding that people are living in them. Yes.
Is there, no, it's a sensitive question. What's the procedure following that?
We are looking into how to handle that best.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. You fill positions pretty quick in your office. Do you have any tips or strategies you can share with anyone?
I don't know. We had two vacant spots last year for quite a while.
Okay.
So, and now we have another administrative assistant that's also vacant.
Currently?
But no, I, I don't have any tips.
The administrative assistant, is that something you guys are promoting right now to hire?
Yeah, we're going to actually interview two people next week, I believe it is.
And how are you guys getting that message across to recruit?
That's HR that is sending that out.
Okay. All right. Thank you. No further questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for the Bureau of Codes? Singnan, thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate all that you do.
Okay, thank you.
I believe that wraps up all of the committee business. We are now going to open the floor for public comment. I do not have the spiel memorized, so I'm going to turn it over to President Bowers.
Thank you, Vice President Green. Not sure if we have any public comment this evening, but I will share a few housekeeping notes, as I generally do, prior to public comment. Please state your name and your address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live within the city. You will have two minutes to share your comments. Mr. Truesdale will serve as our timekeeper. I'll begin to my right. Is there anyone that would like to offer public comment? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle section? Okay, seeing and hearing no one, anyone to my left?
Good evening, Council. Pamela Parson, Holly Street. I think tonight is probably one of the most important parts of the budget hearing, because we're talking about public safety. And public safety is multifaceted, police, fire, and codes. So one of the things that I was a little disappointed... So one of the things that I was a little disappointed about is that I didn't hear the questions that was asked last year about language speakers and about racial makeups of those departments. And that is really key when we are talking about public safety. I had an experience recently with a fire call in the other half of my duplex, and Fire responded quickly and wonderfully, but there was a communication issue between the people in the property who called and the fire, the firefighters who responded. Fortunately, there was not a fire, and everything was resolved with difficulty, but was resolved. But what if it had been more serious? This is also an issue with Codes. We have people who rent properties who may not understand and be able to communicate if they have an issue with their landlord, or there may be landlords who can't, don't really understand all that they're being asked to do. So it's kind of to say, well, gee, I don't know if all of the important materials are translated. That's pretty important to me. And I think as a department head, you need to know that. And we have many language speakers in this city, but clearly, Spanish is probably the most important. And one of the things that we never talk about when we talk about diversity is, you know, we're 50 years on from the Vietnamese being resettled here, yet we never talk about that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to offer public comment? Seeing and hearing no one, Vice President Green, any notes before we adjourn?
Just that we will continue our hearings next week. Next Tuesday will be our next budget hearing, starting at 5:30. I do believe we have a legislative session on Monday, so we will have a legislative session Monday, starting at 6:00 PM. And then the budget hearing is Tuesday, starting at 5:30 PM.
Thank you. And I just wanted to respond, those diversity and language questions were not forgotten. I prefer to have those in writing, so I have not submitted them yet. Thank you. The time is 7:49 PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We stand adjourned.